I will call tonight's City Council meeting to order and start with Julianne in her roll call.
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Valento.
Here.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Mayor Bane.
Here. Let's invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, and to your republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, we have an agenda before you. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Open forum. Open forum is any interested parties' opportunity to address council on any topic of your choice. We'll see if there's anyone signed in this evening. And if you are online for open forum, we will take your comments here in just a moment. We will start with Maron Potts.
Hello, City Council and Mayor Bane. I'm Maron Potts, Vice President of FLA. And I'm here to ask for some help from the City Council on our predicament with our sports using Fenway Fields. FLA is an organization to run youth athletics. We're not a facilities management. And we've learned this twice now because we tried it with the ICE Arena, and we had to get out of there. The school district bought it. We started the parks, Fenway Park going, because the City Council couldn't. And we found out it's just too much work. And we've been working with the city over the number of years. The city has taken on more and more things that we would like to get to the point where the city takes care of the dragging and prepping, because you just spent $100,000-plus last year out there to redo the fields and improve them. And we'd like to continue on that path. But the numbers we're talking with, we've dealt with Abby and Dave originally. In September, we started this. And then lately, it's been Kyle. He's the one that's taken in that position as parks person. The numbers are just going to kill our sports. It's ramping up too quickly. We're having to like double or triple the amount of money they're spending to maintain the fields to get to this. We're asking for some help from the City Council to reduce this cost and allow us to ramp this up over two years. This year, maybe $20,000, $30,000, and next year, $10,000, $15,000 to help us move forward. So that we can do this. Our softball organization has already formed their teams, and they've already started paying. Okay, so to go back and tell all those parents, you need to come up with another $100 so we can do the fields. Baseball is real close to starting, and the other field out there is lacrosse. We used to have football out there. Because the fields were closed last fall for this improvement and maintenance, they ended up going somewhere else. They're not coming back. So now we're spreading the maintenance of the fields out there across three sports instead of four. The maintenance isn't going to be much less, and the dollars are still going to be way more now because you've eliminated 300 participants. So I'm asking the council for some help on that. We've helped very much in the city of Forest Lake with building the ICE Arena and getting that going and getting those fields open and using them, because when they were originally built, they sat. The neighbors used them for a dog park. They could close the two fences, but their dogs run wild. It was great for them. Okay, that doesn't happen anymore. They're used four nights a week and weekends. They're one of the best things you have, and they're a huge income draw for the city. Talk to any of the restaurant owners. They want to know when FLA Sports are having a tournament on weekends. Quick trip is like a zoo. The restaurants, Grillian, Stella's, they all want to know, because when baseball's in here, fast pitches in here, volleyball's in here, basketball's in here, they bring a lot of money to the community. So if the city could find some way to move some money into that and dedicate it to help us on the costs for a couple of years now until we can get ramped up, would be very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Young.
Hi, my name is Susan Young, 9950 199th Street North. In your budget this evening, you passed a new position in the Community Development Department. And I'm looking forward to finding out exactly what that position is going to be and what additional services city residents will receive with the new position. As you all know, 11 of the 22 Planning Commission meetings, for lack of need, were canceled this year. So, you know, that implies that the workload may not have been as high. In addition, we're, I'm wondering if this will have some inspections, if we will be able to have some folks dedicated to enforcing the zoning code on a more than complaint basis, a written complaint basis. I know that the zoning, new zoning text amendments and the rework of that has been contracted out, so that is not, the bulk of that is more contract management than it is personnel. So I'm looking forward to hearing from the council exactly what the new position will provide to the residents and businesses in the city. If it is economic development, then yes, I would certainly hope that they will be a partner with FLA, quite frankly, when you have 10 teams, 100 teams coming in for a basketball tournament. Just the kids and the teams on there, you're looking at 1,000 folks. Every one of those has a family, grandparents, aunts and uncles, cousins that come in to watch the games. If you're looking at economic development for the restaurants and businesses in the city, they're a huge draw. And so I'm hoping that if it is an economic development position, that they will be working with FLA even to, as an economic development, get the lights in so that we can have the state tournaments that would like to come here but can't. All right? Thank you all very much. And I'll look forward to hearing specifics.
Thank you. That is the end of signups for open forum. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in open forum this evening that's here? And Julianne, is there anybody online for open forums?
There is not, Mayor.
Okay. All right, with that, we will bring agenda back to council. Council, for your consideration this evening is our consent agenda. We have on the consent agenda items 6A through 6M. I will ask council for any, a motion to approve or any changes. I will also note, I did ask Ryan to just do a quick highlight of the Bolton and Make Year in Review as part of staff updates. And so no need to pull that from the consent agenda unless you have a change. We will just hear a verbal update from him as part of staff updates as well. Motion to approve or any changes?
I'd like to just pull Consent Agenda C, please.
Very good. Motion to approve items A, B, and D through M. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Next item is consideration of consent agenda item 6C, approve the minutes from the November 18th council workshop. I would move that council approve the November 18th council workshop minutes. Is there a second?
All second.
Second.
We'll take a second from Councilmember Valento. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Abstain.
Abstain.
One abstention. Motion carries, and we'll move on to our regular agenda. First item for consideration this evening is item 7C, which is a resident petition for a public road. And Amanda, I believe you are walking us through.
Yes, thank you, and our council. This packet, on your, page 93 of your packet starts this item. We did receive a petition from residents on Iverson Avenue that is currently a private road. They are looking to open up a discussion around how to make that a public road. I don't want to speak for the residents. They're here, and they can certainly, they'll be invited up to the podium in a moment. But I think it might be helpful for the council to look on page 93. There's a photo there that shows the residents' properties and then the Iverson Avenue. I want to preface everything that I'm about to say with, everything is very preliminary. We don't have title work. We don't have surveys. So we're going off of what GIS looks like. GIS is not always accurate. The photo that we have is a GIS photo. But it does appear as though Iverson Avenue, the private road, is located entirely on the property owner to the left. I don't know. That's northeast, southwest, but in the photo, to the left. And it does not, I do not believe that that property owner is a petitioner on the petition. That doesn't mean that this isn't solvable, but I believe her name is Pam Omen. She would need to be brought into the conversation because right now, the property, the road, excuse me, appears to sit on her property. It appears that it is currently titled as a private easement, and that is how it is used and accessed today. So we don't in our code have a process, a specific process for how the city would receive petitions of any kind. That's something that I'm actually asking tonight for council to give staff the green light to go ahead and draft an ordinance to that effect for petitions moving forward. But when we're talking about roads specifically, there's a lot of statutes around how to turn a public road into a non-existent road, you know, just remove your right-of-way, those types of things. There is not a process to turn a private road into a public road from a statutory perspective. So we don't really have any guidance there. So there are several topics tonight, frankly, around cost, right? Various components of the cost, but really, we're talking about costs. In terms of how to make this road from a private road to a public road, what those costs would look like and who's going to bear those costs. I think with that said, as sort of the setup, I would ask for council to invite the petitioners up here because they can certainly speak to their requests better than I can.
Very good. Petitioners, welcome to either, I don't know if you have a spokesperson that would like to speak, or, and as many people can speak tonight as who would like to speak. Whoever would like to start, if you could, come to the podium, please.
Hi, I'm Rick Van Orne. I live on the Iverson Road we're talking about. I think most of our party is here and represented. I'm probably the least experienced out of all of them. We've only lived there. We built just in 2021. But prior to that, as I understand it, the, at one point, the city did take care of our road where they graded it twice a year and plowed it. And since I've been there, that hasn't been the case. It's been very difficult and challenging. I think it's so great, Amanda, that you sent some pictures. We've got some more, if you'd like to see the major holes and dips that get in the road. It's pretty crazy, especially in the wintertime, just to navigate. It's actually, in all of our opinions, a public safety hazard as well. We're concerned about even if emergency workers had to get down that road. So I think this started for us when a sign was put up that was blue, and we're like, huh, blue. We didn't have a road sign before that. And Michelle, one of our neighbors, found out, oh, that's because it's a private road. But when she called, it was mentioned, there might be a possibility that that could be turned, or at least we should look into turning it back into a public road. And maybe that grading and plowing could come back. So cost-wise, that's one option that we're certainly open to. I know there's probably others as well that might be quite a bit more expensive. But I think we're interested in the various options that might be available to us.
Do you mind just describing, so primary need, is it grading and plowing? Can you give us your laundry list? It's helpful to just hear.
Sure.
What brings you here?
Yeah, so it's dirt right now. And so these potholes get to be massive and very deep. And we end up, oh, I think about all of us at various times have brought in some fill to try and cover that. So our, I speak for the group, but jump in if I'm wrong. But I think the big thing would be, boy, if we could get it back to where it's graded and that plowing is done in the wintertime. You know, if we get two feet of snow, some of the residents that don't have four-wheel drive wouldn't be able to get out even. So I think that's our primary. I think the laundry list would be long-term. Geez, I think just a couple blocks up off of 97, I saw another road that was actually done by the city where it was turned into asphalt. And that's certainly something else that we'd be interested in, depending on what the cost would be. Those are our big things, I think. I don't, I don't think it's realistic. We don't have fire hydrants, but I think that might be a little bit more that we're all wells. I don't know if you can have fire hydrants down that type of thing. There's no lighting, but again, I don't think there is around the neighborhood. So those are our big things we're looking for. Did I miss anything?
Anyone else that would like to speak?
Just since Rick is new to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
We.
Could I have you start with your name and address for the record? That'd be great.
Yep, yep. It's Jim Sherman. And I'm at 21123 Iverson Avenue North. It actually is. And there was, in the past, the city would plow or would grade the road with a road grader twice a year. And we had no issues. There are seven houses on the street. I know for my family, we're down to four drivers, but we had five driving over this road. If you've seen the pictures, every day, multiple times with multiple drivers. And one of the things we were told by the council in the past is the reason the road was no longer going to be graded is because they were grading another private road, and they hit a mailbox, and they had to replace it. So I understand that. Our mailboxes are out of the way. They're not on the street. They're in one location at the end of the street, off to the side. So the other thing I think that's happened with the road not being graded away from the homes is we've seen water coming onto people's driveways because the road is no longer sloped the way it was. So I just wanted to add that history because you weren't there at that time. But it's, and then the other concern, too, is when the snowplows come on the public road, they leave a massive amount of snow there that if we can get through the street, we still have to go through that big pile of snow from the snowplows. So I just wanted to add that detail. Hope that helps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Don't go far, but. And is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Amanda, you're back.
Yeah, thank you, and our council. So one piece of information that I did not have until tonight was that at some point in history, the city took care of the road?
Dave, do you have some insight for us?
Is this also new information?
So how far do you want to rewind time back to township days? We can.
Is that what we're, is that how far back we're talking?
Yes.
Okay. Can you help us on timeframe on when, when did the road stop being, when was the last time you saw a grader? Before that?
2013. That's probably closer, yeah.
Okay.
So there's a number. I mean, I wish I'd have brought the map, and I don't know if I'm present on them. Maybe I have it, too, but it shows all of our private roads throughout the city. And prior to 2013, we had a grader operator that liked to just go and grade everything. So he was grading private roads, people's driveways. He was.
Full service.
Doing a little bit of everything. So around that 2013-14 time, there was kind of a look through of, yeah, we probably don't need to be doing private stuff. So that's probably accurate. Say, well, 2013, 2014 were kind of a, full study was kind of of worse. What are the private roads? What are the public roads? You know, you should probably, it could be a mailbox was hit. I don't, that part I don't know. But there was, yeah. So there was a spot there where, there was a lot of stuff happening where we probably shouldn't have been doing what we were doing. So.
Appreciate that.
Yes, thank you, and our council. So that's a piece of information that we can talk about at a staff level, but I just, that was new information for me tonight. So threshold, really, the threshold question is from the council perspective, there would need to be staff time, money, resources into pulling the title work, or frankly, the property owners could, you know, provide us with title work. But getting the title work to confirm how the property that road is currently owned. If it's a private easement, they can't give us a public easement, because if you think about real estate, if I have fee title to something, I have everything, right? I have all of the rights in my bundle of sticks for my property. And if I have a right-of-way easement, so if I have the public control, then I get to do things as the government. If I have a private easement, though, that's considered a lesser right than the government, than a public easement. And so I can't just give my private easement to the city in this situation and turn it into a public easement. It does not work that way. We would have to purchase from the underlying property owner a public easement. If it's the individuals here this evening, they would probably just sign that over to us, and we won't expect any sort of compensation. If it's that adjacent property owner, she does have the right under eminent domain law to require fair compensation, just compensation for what we're taking. So I, there's a lot of different kind of pieces. The first couple of pieces are, all right, there needs to probably be a survey, and there needs to be title work to figure out, how is this, how is this actually owned? That is going to cost some money. Complete ballpark, and I am very much ball parking here, but I would ballpark that probably around, for all of those properties plus a survey, you're looking at about $20,000 in cost to get those, that title work and that survey done. It's not a small amount of money, which is why the question to council is, right out the gate, how do you want this to be set up in terms of who is paying these administrative costs to get to an answer of, can this be done? And then, so pin on that, but that would be, the first question is, who's sort of paying for these costs? The second thing to just note is, this is a private road, as the photos show. It's in tough shape. If we were to take it as a public road, under our city code, our city code has minimum road requirements for public streets. So it would have to be brought up to the level of a public street, which, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe, does that require asphalt?
Correct.
And curbing gutter?
This would be rural, so not curbing gutter, but a paved street.
And so asphalt, and I believe stormwater facilities as well, based on what the watershed requires, right?
This would trigger stormwater permitting. It would be over there.
There'd be a full stormwater permit with a previous area. Would it be reconstructing?
So I don't, I will not attempt to ballpark with that cost. But it's not five figures. So that is the piece to understand around, there's definitely some hurdles here. That said, I, there is some new information around the fact that we previously cared for this road, that I do think merits some conversation at the staff level in terms of the impact that that might have on some of what we need to do moving forward. But for the purposes of tonight, what I'm looking for from the council is some direction on, do you want the city to pay these initial title fee costs, you know, survey costs? Do you want to set up some sort of a petition process that would have the applicants be required to escrow something for those costs? Or do you want the instructions to the petitioners to be, you need to go get these things, the survey, this title work, and bring that back to staff to analyze the ask? And so then they would, you know, pay for that work and then bring that to the council. So those are kind of the three options for that first bucket of costs. The second is, if we actually do take on this road, the cost of acquiring the public easement, the cost of bringing the road up to standards, who's paying for that? And we do have a road assessment policy, but I'm not sure that it really contemplates situations like this. So it's possible that our road assessment policy would require some review at a minimum. So I know that those aren't super fun answers, but those are the realities of the situation. It is, it is a little more nuanced. Does that make, so to go back to the first question, the first question is the initial review administrative costs.
And.
Quick, just a quick point of clarification. Amanda, it sounds like that first point is down a pathway of purchase and city maintained. And what I heard, public comment tonight, was all options are on the table. Not necessarily, it's the only option. You know, is there an option for grading and plowing? So.
Yeah.
What you're suggesting as step one required for that pathway?
So if we, your honor, council, if you wanted to go down the, going back to you grade it twice a year and you plow it, there is a weird statute that requires that if we plow private roads, they must pay the actual, like the real costs to plow relatedly, and related maintenance. So I would just say, the grading and the plowing would need to be paid by the property owners for the private road. It would get a little bit tricky because technically, the property, the private road is not on, on the petitioner's property. It's on that adjacent property's property. So we would probably need to do some fancy documents to sort of make sure that they're being assessed to the correct property, you know, the users versus that adjacent property owner. But that could be a feasible option as well. That does require, I would go back to the same question of, that's going to require some legal research and some things. And so who, who do you want paying for that analysis as well?
Can I just, can I just ask a, I have a hard time believing that the city's going to be the low-cost provider for plowing and grading services. It feels, so then, and I also appreciate, I appreciate the interesting question of, well, can we just become a city street? And let's start that conversation. But given what we've just heard about the cost to even start the project, and that's before we've even entered into conversations with the property owner about those acquisition costs, I mean, we're in a bit of a bind where the cost to even start the project start mounting fairly quickly. And I would hate to have everyone be overcommitted if there is just, if the base need is, we just really need some plowing and some snow removal. I'm not sure we're going to land in a spot where we are the best option. We do great work, but I think you may have some other options out there. And so I guess that would, before we get too far down the road of something that's quite complicated and very, very expensive, I guess I'd want to better understand that we're heading down a path that you also want to head down. The, typically, these costs end up being bore by the property owners. And so we're happy to do a big project and happy to have that become a city street. If that's a path that financially you want to go down, I just don't know if we're going to hit those marks that you want to do that. So it's a little bit of chicken, very much chicken and egg. And because again, we're going to end in the answer here, where even some of these initial $20,000-type costs or surveys, that's going to have to, unless council has some other thoughts, I think, have to be a bill-back agreement. I don't feel great about us taking that on as a city-born cost. We have a lot of private roads. These questions come up occasionally, but ultimately, generally, property owners end up like, oh, we'll figure something else out just because the costs, as you can just start to tell, become very costly very quickly. And I see a hand up in the back. If you could, though, just come to the microphone just so we can all hear.
I think one of the concerns we have or questions we have, and Amanda, you had mentioned, is this a publicly-owned easement or private? I believe it's private. So one of the things that we may be limited on is the owner of the property, which, by the way, it's on sale right now. They put it up on the market on Zillow. And there, there's some things in there about, you know, having some properties built on the 14 acres and having lake access, deeded lake access, all these things up in the air. But in the past, when we asked about potentially doing, for example, recycled asphalt on the road, the property owner says, no, you can't do that. So that's one of our concerns, is if it's a privately-held easement, which I believe it is, we could be at the mercy of the property owner. And by the way, it's Julie Omen, not Pam Omen. Julie Omen. Thank you.
And with all due respect, you're at the mercy. We also are at the mercy, right? Or at least financially, right? Like, we have, you know, there is a compensation process that is just going to have to be the nature of the beast because of how it seems like it's titled. So.
Counsel, I jumped in with some thoughts here. Let's step back. And as we're thinking about, you know, is this cost that would be part of a bill-back agreement? Is that a path that everyone agrees with? Is there an inkling that thinks that there's some city-born costs here? Let's just open it up.
Well, so my first question was asked about the property owner. So she, it sounds like not allowing to put any rec. So, she, sounds like not allowing to put any recycle down, so the likelihood of giving up this land probably is unlikely. Is that correct?
That could be. That actually came from her late husband.
Okay.
So I don't know about Mrs. Omen.
And I think it's okay, maybe we identify some things for the question list, and maybe that's one of the things for the question list of, we may not know tonight, and might be part of what needs to be determined.
I think the other thing is, you know, I would be open, a little bit open, to have some kind of cost share on some of this, to upgrade a city, well, what could potentially be a city street, which then maybe would add some tax value to those homes, therefore the city would benefit from that. So I would be open to that. It's not a hard no for me. But it does, you start talking watershed district, and it just gets out of hand in a hurry, and so I don't, even if we were to share a portion of that, I don't know if you'd have the appetite to go down that road, because it could get really expensive quickly.
Yeah, I guess I'd just be really curious to know more about the private easement, and, I mean, if the easement's there, and there's several houses built along there, I mean, how is it that they somehow can dictate that it has to be a mud pit, that these people have to drive through? I mean, that seems remiss.
Is that question, is that question a property-owner-to-property-owner question? Dave, go ahead.
This is kind of similar to Everton Avenue North, if you know, on the south side of Clear Lake, we get that probably every couple of years about maintaining that road. That's another private road that is way more disrepair than in this road. Not make the same one as worse than the other, but it's the same thing where, it's a private road, and I think the easement is there because we have sewer that runs underneath both of these roads, so that's probably the access point of why that happened, of to give sewer to these houses. Roadway easements then were created, and they're just, were private, you know, and we're running the same thing on Everton Avenue North. On that side, nobody, you can't get enough of them to ever create a petition to turn it in, but, to your point as well, there's a lot of other cheaper companies that'll, I mean, we're not telling the private owners that they have to shovel this out themselves. I mean, they have more than the ability to have somebody come and grade the road twice a year, or come and snowplow in the winter, you know. It's not like, I mean, there's tons of contractors out there that can do it. We have Hookster Avenue, that's just a little to the south, and they've hired a contractor that grades it twice a year, and they do the snow removal, so, I mean, there's companies out that do that, and like, and they can do it cheaper than us, and they'll do it at different intervals and all that. So, it just gets dicey if we start going into private property and plowing, so. Not that we don't have the capacity to do it, we just don't want to set that precedent because we have a lot of private road areas that if we start jumping in private roads, where do you stop with that, too? And what is your threshold for that?
Yeah. Where do you want to take us next?
So, one, another fun piece of information that I just learned tonight was that the property is for sale, that the, it sounds like this private easement is on. That is a large parcel, we've talked about that at development meetings, that seems like there could be some development on that parcel. Obviously, if that parcel were to be developed and a couple of homes were put on it, that completely changes the dynamic in terms of, if they're also accessing this as part of the requirements under our current code, they would have to make that a public road, right? I mean, so they would have to dedicate that as part of a future development. So, I hesitate to suggest to the council, maybe it's a wait-and-see, but if it's on sale right now, may, maybe it's a wait-and-see, maybe it's a reevaluate, you know, come back in 60 days, or 90 days, or whatever. Or maybe it's initially reaching out to the current property owner, just to have a conversation to see if there's any appetite about giving, dedicating a public easement through their, I'm not suggesting that that's the best course of action, but sometimes you can cut a lot of wasted time and money and energy out if you just have a phone call with somebody. So those are my two reactions, and I don't like doing math at the table like this, because I usually get it wrong, but those are my two optic have-thoughts.
The conversation with the property owner in light of that property being up for sale, who is best positioned to have that? Is that a, is that a resident conversation, group of residents with that property owner? Is there a, should the city be at that table? What should that be? I say that because, as soon as the city's at the table, the dynamic always changes, but there is a point there, city has to be at the table if this is going to be a city project, and so how would you thread that needle?
Yeah, so I would defer back to the petitioners, in terms of if they want to try to go solve this privately first, then obviously we would stand down and there would be no speaking about it. If it's something that they thought that it would be more beneficial if the city reaches out to the adjacent property owner, then I would suggest that it would probably be Abby, just given her, you know, community development director hat. So, sorry, Abby. I can be on the call, too. So I would suggest that she maybe just, and just from a friendly, like, development perspective, we see it's up for sale, are you getting development interest? What does that look like? And having a conversation from that perspective might be the softest. City touch, unless the petitioners are looking to exit stage left right now.
I think it'd be great to have them all reach out.
Have city reach out?
Development call?
It seems to me that, that if that road was public, and it should be, as far as I'm concerned, that would benefit both sides.
It potentially could.
Right, and so, I don't know how far back this goes. When was the house, first house built in there? Do you know, Dave, by any chance? All, as long as it's been going on?
Probably like then.
The reason I'm asking is that...
When was the first house built?
Just, it's backways, I mean, right? Because you talked about...
For sure in the 50s or earlier.
Yeah.
Mine's about two years ago.
Point being is that...
Are those built in the early 50s?
Sure. Point being that nowadays, that'd never be allowed, to not have public access from residents. And so, there's got to be some kind of a compromise we can make that work, it seems to me, and don't know exactly what that is, or what that path is, but, just seems to me that that public road, if it was a public road, would benefit both sides, both sides of the road. So, something that I, I would like to, I would like to see the city, at least do the survey on it, and see where it's at, and maybe reach out to the other landowner there and find out what we can do with it.
And survey the city cost, sure.
In the, can I just add that, in the ad for selling the land, it said, the lot size, which is adjacent to our house, which is one of the couple of lots we think, is approximate, and then the survey needs to be done. And there's been delineation surveys, and delineated wetlands, and there's enormous amount of wetland, so it's limited building area, I believe, on those 14 acres.
Abby, I think you were...
I will say, and just a cursory review, everything that's been said tonight, lots of facts, that it is, the 14 acres is over half of its encumbered by wetlands. So the, even the idea of maybe being able to put an improvement such as a linear road through here, might not be able to happen, I'm not saying that's the case. I do think that the best thing for the city to do is to reach out to the landowner, especially now that it's listed, that was news to us, even, I think, when we first brought this up a week or so ago, and just see if there's been any sort of movement on the property, and to keep us posted if anyone's interested. We get inquiries all the time, when there's properties for sale, people looking at buying them, so I definitely will also alert my staff if we start to hear of potential interest in the property. I do agree that improved roadway through here could enhance the other side of the roadway and the developability there, but those lots already access on, have access onto Iverson as well. So, we, there are some, there's some opportunities through there, but also some constraints, so.
Go ahead, any other comments?
I do have a question. 211-65-IVerson, Matt Dowdell. Thank you for taking the time for this, it's like, been a long time. I moved in like 2012, I'd say they did like a year or two following, but regarding the staying of private easement and drainage, you know, what recommendation would you give for that? We've had companies out there, like, we won't touch it, because we need their, the property owner's blessing as well. So, that's something I look for advice on. And then also, if those lots were sold, what would that look like for us to kind of plan ahead?
If those lots were sold, if, can somebody just give the property owners just a very high level of what that development agreement would look like, and like, the city, the city process for easements, and what that would look like if they were to parcel off that, those current acreage?
Sure, if there was going to be a subdivision, the neighborhood, everybody within 350, 500, Susan might know the exact foot distance better than I, would be noticed that there'd be a planning application submitted and a consideration by our planning commission. We'd look at, it would be three different applications, but you'd be noticed at the time of preliminary plat. Preliminary plat, we look at what kind of the lot configuration would be, but also any sort of public improvements, such as a roadway, or any other public infrastructure needed in the area. The city would enter into a development agreement, so that the developer would be obligated to make certain improvements as part of the subdivision. Now, our ask of developers, though, has to bear a rough proportionality to the development. If somebody came to me today and said, hey, I want to split this, I just want two lots, both of them accessed off of Iverson, that's a harder sell for us to say, oh, you have to put in a public road behind you. With regard, I did just do a spot check on a few of the deeds on the properties, it looks like most of them have been deeded, that 33 feet in the easement. With your question with grading, I would suggest you do it within the 33 feet, or you call Julie Omen and talk with her. Unfortunately, it's a private property owner issue at the moment. I didn't mean to speak for our legal counsel, but, I mean, that's what, if somebody came to me and asked these exact things, that's what unfortunately it would be. I think that doing a little bit of exploration with Julie, and seeing what would happen, could happen there, frankly, I don't know that getting a survey right now makes any sense. I think the only thing that could probably be of a benefit is some title work, but I think the title work's still going to find they have a 33-foot private easement. That's just a hunch from doing this for a little while.
Suggested next action, have Abby reach out with a phone call, have a conversation with current property owner about potential sale options, and then Abby, I'm assuming you have a primary contact for the resident group, is that right?
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, I happily can get that from Amanda and Jolene.
So just a quick follow-up question on that. So if they have a 33-foot easement, could they do some recycle, or do maintain the road at all, or is that still property?
That's something they should probably contact their legal counsel and ask.
Your Honor, council, it depends on what the words are in that private easement. So, it's in, our understanding so far is that they're in deeds versus, like, in the actual, you know, deed versus what we call paper easements. In paper easements, you can put in more rules around, you're responsible for the maintenance, you're responsible for, you get to put up a fence, you get to, we know all of these special things. Usually, in deed language, it's much more abbreviated, and unfortunately, it's not as clear, so, I'm assuming that's the situation here. Generally, you'd have to go by what the words are there, and if the property, the underlying property owner tells you no, you do it at the risk of getting sued, essentially, by that property owner. The one issue, so, I, just looking at GIS, it kind of looks like, I understand that everybody has a 33-foot easement, but it isn't like it's the end of her, it doesn't look like it's the end of her property, it looks like the road is sort of, you look on page 93, it looks like frankly, her property line comes into some of these properties' front yards, and maybe on one or two of them, even their home. I don't think that's correct, but that's where a survey could confirm that the 33 feet is actually where the road is, versus the 33 feet is some location that's not even where the road is sitting today. But it's, a survey is very expensive, it's the bulk of that upfront cost, compared to title commitments.
If Abby's willing to reach out to Julie, I think that's a good first step, and see what we can go from there.
Hopefully, this property being up for sale is a bit of a transition point and an opportunity for some new options to be on the table. You know, Amanda, one of the things that you asked of us is, a question was going to be, if the underlying property owner does not want to sell right away to the city, will the city use condemnation to make the road public? I'm not going to be here for that vote, but I can just imagine that's going to be a really tough sell, to use some level of condemnation to force that transaction, given that this has been a transaction between private property owners for decades. And so, the turning point is the condition of the road, and there are some other solves for that, that wouldn't have to involve the city. I appreciate why everyone's asking, but there are some other options on the table that I just, no one has a crystal ball, but I think it's going to be challenging for future council to say, yes, we're going to do a condemnation, and we're going to force that transaction. So I think finding options of agreement is probably the best course of action right now. And again, if somebody's already willing to sell, then there's a great open door to maybe some options to come forward.
Other?
I, yeah, I have one other, I think we have clear direction for where to start. That general petition process, is that something that council would be open to staff bringing forward an ordinance that just sort of spells out, here's how it works to do petitions in the city? So that, there's a clear process for, when people come, we can point them to it. It saves time, it saves everything. Is that something that you're open to, us bringing back?
Yeah.
Yes, I'd agree. Okay, thank you.
I would assume that process would include kind of clear delineation of what the plan is for escrow costs and what could...
Yes.
I would agree.
Any other guidance, either Abby or Amanda, that you need from council on this topic?
Not right now.
Petitioners, I know we didn't get you a final answer today, hopefully we've given you some additional information. Anything else you'd like council to know before we close this one out?
Very good.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks.
Okay. We are going to move on to our next agenda item, which is consideration of 7B, certification of delinquent utility accounts. Kevin, are you walking us through this?
Yes, I am, Mayor Bain, Mayor Bain and City Council. So in front of you tonight is a resolution to approve certification of delinquent utility accounts, along with that resolution, before that is approved, the city does hold a public hearing for anyone who wishes to speak regarding this topic. So this is the annual process that the city does this time of year, where utility bills are unpaid, notices are sent out to the homeowners via letter, and those were sent out this year at the end of October, early November. They are notified that they have not paid their utility bills, and they have the opportunity to come in and pay, come in tonight to talk at the public hearing, and then if it is unpaid, this year by December 12th, then those would, will be sent to the county by the end of the year to be paid along with their property taxes. There is an 18% fee added on to any delinquent balances, if it is sent to the county. If it is paid before December 12th, then that 18% fee is not added. So with that, if council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, otherwise, I would request that you open the public hearing.
Very good. Thank you, Kevin. Counsel, any questions of Kevin before we open public hearing? Not seeing any questions. All right, with that, we will open up the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this topic? If so, please join us at the podium. Anyone that would like to speak in public hearing? Jolene, anybody online? And wishing to speak?
No one indicating they wish to speak, here.
All right. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone come forward, we'll close public hearing, bring consideration back to council. Counsel, for your consideration is Resolution 1292405. I would move that council approve Resolution 129...
I would move that council approve Resolution twelve-nine-twenty-four-zero-five. Is there a second?
A second.
A second? We'll, um, we'll take a second from Councilmember Erickson. Any discussion?
Just, uh, just a couple of questions on this. Is, does staff take, on some of these, like, ones up to twenty-five thousand, is there any individual reach out to some of these people on some of these larger dollar amounts? Because we're at a half a million dollars here in delinquents, so is there proactives? Do we hire a contract, you know, subcontract out to a collection agency or something? Because these are substantial dollars and...
Uh, so in these cases, this is the, we are the collection agency with these bills that are unpaid. They are noticed. Every time they get a quarterly bill, there is a previous balance on there. Um, I did specifically talk to our utility billing staff on these larger amounts. Has there been any direct contact made? They have tried. They've tried to, um, reach out to what the information we have. Some homeowners, we have an email and a phone number, so we're able to. Others, we just have an address. So, we send them the notice for the public, uh, for a public hearing, and that is unpaid. So, there are instances where we do look at this. We try to be as proactive as we can, because ultimately, at the city, we'd rather have them pay than have these, um, get sent to their taxes.
Um, any other discussion? Hearing done, we have a motion on the table with a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. Our next item this evening is consideration of the twenty-twenty-five fee schedule and ordinance seven forty-five. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor Bain and City Council. So, again, annually, uh, in front of you is some proposed changes to annual fee schedule. Uh, before I get started, I just want to note that it is ordinance number seven four five. There is a typo on the actual fee schedule where it says seven four six, but the correct ordinance number is seven four five. So, part of the city's annual process, uh, this time of year is looking at the, uh, the city fee schedule. Uh, so working with all, uh, department heads, they review the fees that are charged specifically to, to their department and come up with any recommended changes that they have regarding the fees. Um, one real consistency, uh, with the fees this year for changes have been increases to areas where, um, there's staff time involved. There's more staff, um, involvement and time to process, um, certain fees. So, there are some increases to those fees being, uh, proposed. This reflects, um, the increase in those wages, as a lot of these fees have not been adjusted for quite some time. Uh, there is, um, Abby did add some administrative citation language into the fee, uh, schedule as well, which is new this year. Uh, so that's up for your review. But other than that, it's really an ink, it's really a reflection of how long are these fees taking city staff time? Looking at the time spent, the wages have increased since these, since, um, they've last been increased. And then also, in some cases, with regards to the park and recreation and rental facilities, uh, they haven't been increased in some time. It really just, um, getting those up to, uh, market and the maintenance that goes along, um, with those. So, with that, I'll turn it over to City Council. If you have any specific questions for myself, or if there's questions on specific fees, I'd turn those over to the department heads as well.
Thank you, Kevin. Counsel, let's open it up for council questions, discussion points? I have a, um, so I have a question kind of related to some of the feedback we heard in open forum. Refresh my memory on, I know we've had, um, a long relationship with FLA and that agreement and those fees associated with FLA have taken on multiple paths through the years. Um, the, 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 is, I guess, I, my question is, I'm not quite sure how to phrase it, is, is there a pathway to, um, have, as consideration of part of what we're adopting tonight, some sort of a, um, I liked the way Myron phrased it, which was a, a two-year phase-in? That does something that, um, specific for the FLA fees that, um, provides some transition time? And I'm just, in, there's a lot on this particular fee agreement. I'm just not sure how to best, um, I guess, pose that question, but I'm open to some sort of a phase-in. There are a lot of moving pieces on both of our, both of our organizations. And so, I, you know, I think landing on something that makes sense is something that we're, we all want to do. But also, I don't want to hold up an entire fee schedule for that particular question, so again, is, you hear my question, Dave?
Yep. So, the fee, the fee schedule, those, those costs for, um, chalking fields, doing that maintenance is for anybody that's not in our, so FLA hasn't a, like, a priority use agreement with the city. So, these, those fees are all waived, so that's, when they do their scheduling and their field priority use, that, that doesn't go along with this field scheduling.
Fee, so, so that feedback is a conversation on a different day?
It's, it's a different, different conversation. The, the fees on here is for if another entity wants to come in and use a field, this is what we would charge them to prep the field. And it has nothing to do with FLA. That's, it's asterisked out that it's, it doesn't, their agreement supersedes the fee schedule, or we don't do up per time like that.
Okay. And, and where are we with, for that agreement? Are we in? I'm drawing completely, are we in pre-negotiation for next year's schedule?
Correct.
Not yet finalized, right?
Not yet finalized.
Not yet finalized, okay.
Yep.
Okay. That was my specific feedback on the fee schedule. Happy to open it up for any other points that council might have?
Any of these increases are, I would assume, are still in line with what our comparable cities are doing? The most part, there's nothing that's really out there that...
If you don't mind, Kevin, I would jump in. I've only been here for a couple of years now. I know I haven't been able to take the time to really do the best market rate analysis in the community development fees. It's something that we've intended to do. It's just, wasn't able to be done this year. Um, I don't think that our line, our fees are, are extorbinantly higher or even super low compared to those, but it is worth, uh, dedicating some resources to that, uh, I think, in, in another go-around of this.
Other questions, comments specific to the fee agreement or fee schedule? All right, it is a foundational document that, you know, impacts, um, beginning of the year items, so it is important that we are able to take action tonight, if we're able. Anyone ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number seven four five, an ordinance repealing and replacing city code, chapter thirty-five, fees and service charges.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. Our next item this evening is item seven D, consideration of the cannabis registration ordinance, which is ordinance seven forty-five and Resolution twelve-nine-twenty-four-ten. Amanda's walking us through this.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor.
This one will not be as long as last year, I promise. It's a quick one. Okay. Does that show up there, Jolene?
You should be. What view are you in right now on your PowerPoint?
Mm-hmm.
Are you, you have your PowerPoint up?
Yep.
Go to, uh, start from the beginning?
Yep. Anything? Nothing? Let me go back on and go back in. Oh, there we go. Just needed to be patient. Oh, no! What did I do?
Do I need to just stand over?
Yeah, just. I don't, I don't.
Can you just unplug it?
Yeah. Want to go back on? Go back in? My goodness. It did just show up, right?
It was showing.
Okay. Want to close it? Close the rest of these. This one is not that complicated. Forget my mouse, girl. There. Nope. Oh, it wants to, it's trying to fight with that, okay. Sure, I did like that, didn't I?
Do you want a thumb drive?
Hmm?
Do you want a thumb drive?
Yeah, do you want to maybe give it to me and I'll put it on?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can just talk, and you know, I mean, this is not a complicated one.
I'm going to put it onto this one. Why don't you start talking?
Okay. There you go. No.
So, load it on here.
Okay. I really can just talk about it. It's not that complicated. Nope, sorry. Yes. Okay.
Or do you want to just give me your computer?
Yeah, do you want to do that? I have two. I mean, I have this one, I have the next one. Sorry about that, technical difficulties, Your Honor, counsel? Well, that's getting, um, set up. I will just try to remember what I said on there, and we'll go from there. Uh, so, if you recall, at the last council meeting, you approved the cannabis use ordinance, and that was the zoning ordinance about where cannabis businesses get to go. Uh, tonight's ordinance is the cannabis business registration ordinance, and that is the ordinance that is allowing the city to register retail cannabis businesses. As a reminder, O C M, the Office of Cannabis Management, gets to do all the licensing, and what the city gets to do is register the retail businesses. Retail businesses being cannabis retail, cannabis mezzo businesses, and cannabis micro businesses. Um, so those are the three businesses that get to be, uh, registered with the city. For, uh, the ordinance itself, um, just, it's kind of, it's in your packet. But generally speaking, the ordinance is, we are not limiting the number, so we are not limiting the number of registrations. If you recall, council decided to do some limiting through distance requirements between stores, distance requirements, um, from schools, parks, that type of thing, and then the zoning districts in which it, they are allowing these businesses. Oh, here we are. Thank you. Okay, yay, we talked about that. All right. Um, so, the, the ordinance, if, we'll kind of walk through it in, in terms of the time for the applicant. So, the applicant has some pre-registration requirements. These are things that they need to do before they can register their business. Um, they need to have a compliance check, so that means that somebody from city staff is going out to the business and making sure that it complies with city code. They also need to get all of their related zoning approvals. So, if you recall, all these businesses need to have an interim use permit, so that's something that they're going to need to get before they can register. And then they also need to pay a registration fee. Registration fee is set by statute. It's going to vary depending upon the business, um, but it will range from about five hundred dollars to about a thousand dollars. That is an annual fee because they do need to renew this every year. We don't have control over it, though. It's what's set by statute. Um, so, in addition to demonstrating that they already have the, uh, the, the interim use permit, and they've done a compliance check, they also need to provide the following documents to the city staff for review and approval. That's the security plan. That's going to go to P D. The odor mitigation plan, as we talked about at the last meeting, we're not entirely sure how we're going to vet these, but we know we want them. Um, so we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. Um, and then a photometric plan. So, if it's going to be in a greenhouse, we want to see, ensure that it's not going to be shedding light, you know, into a neighbor's property and being a nuisance in that way. So, these are additional documents that they would need to provide with their completed application. Um, so, once they've provided all these documents, the, uh, application is going to be reviewed and approved administratively. In other words, it's not going towards, before council or, uh, planning commission, and that is because you will have already seen it via the interim use permit, and of course, any other, um, approvals that would need to, you know, be had at that time. That interim use permit really has a lot of the exact same things that this, uh, registration requires, so it's, it's really redundant, and we didn't want to add an extra sixty days to, you know, like, their ability to open. Um, so that's why we're doing it administratively. And, so, uh, they do need to have, we, we will need to do annual compliance checks on these retail businesses. It's going to be exactly like the P D does for tobacco and alcohol. So, they'll have somebody under, uh, twenty-one go in and try to purchase, and, and that's how they'll, they'll run the compliance checks. Those need to happen annually. They also need to renew, uh, the registration annually. Okay, so that is, um, that's the ordinance in a nutshell. There's a little bit in the ordinance, just so you know, around, um, what we can do to, uh, terminate a registration. It is a hundred percent regulated by statute, so it is quite literally a copy and paste from what's already in statute. Um, and we have to sort of run some things through the Office of Cannabis Management if we need to revoke a, a registration. I stand for questions. Otherwise, if you're looking for next steps, the steps are on the screen in front of you. Motion to approve, and is this actually ordinance one seven forty-five, not seven forty-six? It's seven forty-six in the packet.
Seven forty-six.
Yeah, okay. Um, so, motion to approve ordinance seven forty-six, and then the motion to approve the resolution for summary publication. If you recall, we're doing that, so we do not have to publish the whole ordinance.
Counsel, open it up for questions. The initial, um, in the ordinance, the very, the, the initial section, of course, I just lost it. Upon license, upon issuing, upon issuing the registration, we call that a compliance check? I, I don't, I'm not so much, I don't necessarily care what we call it, but it's more of a building code inspection, right?
Right, correct.
And, and then later in the ordinance, we also do reference a more traditional compliance checker on age requirements?
Yes, you're right. So, and that's just using the words from the statute.
Is that the, is that, was, okay.
Yeah, so the, the first one is a compliance check with city code. And then the second one is these annual compliance checks that are really age verification.
And we do not, are there, does the statute require us to, or does our, our ordinance, um, contemplate us doing more of the traditional building code on an annual basis, or is that a one-time pre-opening, and then it's just age verification?
It's pretty much a one-time, uh, pre-opening, and then it's just age verification.
Okay. A, um, there was a, just given the nature of the product and given the sensitivity, or, because there's not ever, I guess, maybe what I'm getting at, there's not ever, uh, they, they will do an initial plan of operations, and they're going to say, "Here's our odor mitigation plan. Here's our photometric plan." Do we have subsequent follow-up checks to confirm that they're doing what they said they were going to do, or is that just complaint-based?
That is just complaint-based right now. So, those are all documents that are required to get the registration, but I will also be putting all of those into their interim use permit as conditions. And so, really, the tool that you have to, uh, the, the code enforcement tool, if you will, for these businesses, if, if they are producing odor, or if they're doing, they're violating their security plan, is to pull their interim use permit. And then they cannot operate. And that's a mechanism that has, that we've designed, because we don't have the ability to pull a license, right? So, to alcohol, tobacco, we can, we can decide that we're going to pull their license. Because the state is, is not allowing local control over the license, we're getting a little creative, and so we're kind of creating, if you will, a license through that interim use permit.
Understood.
So, this is, this is very... So this is, this is very light touch because we have a bigger, more effective tool.
So, would there be a mechanism where we could also call that a, make those, that beginning inspection also part of the annual process? And if they fail, yes, it's a failure of the interim use permit, but can we also then do that reporting up to the state and say, oh, by the way, we had a photometric plan and they're not in compliance with that either? Can we do that on an annual basis, or just not advised?
Yeah, so they have to renew every year, and so that, they have to give us the same paperwork every year and renew, and then we have to send to the state every year, yes, they've renewed their registration, or no, you know, we failed their registration, or whatever. So we will be in very co, uh, frequent communication with OCM. I'm not entirely sure how that's going to work. It feels like it's pretty redundant, i- i- it, we'll see, right? That, the, I think there's going to be some changes in terms of how this is all structured in the next, within the next couple of years, because there's some weird overlap.
Those are my only questions, Counsel, other questions you may have? All right, we may be ready for a motion, if anyone's ready?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve cannabis business registration ordinance seven four six.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twelve oh nine twenty-four ten, the summary publication of ordinance seven four six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. We will transition next to item seven E, which is the building citation fee, and this is Amanda, whenever you're ready. I'm sorry, I said building citation, administrative citation.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, Counsel. Uh, so tonight, um, we have an ordinance for your consideration regarding the administration, administrative citation fee. Um, if you recall, in twenty twenty-four, uh, the beginning of last year, council approved a package of code enforcement-related ordinances. And one of the tools in those ordinances was the administrative citation. Um, and so the administrative citation is a tool that we can use to deal with non-criminal city code violations. So we're talking about the weeds, not mowing, um, you know, plowing, or not, not, not plowing, violating a watering require, or watering ban, um, building maintenance, just sort of those types of things. You can use it for any code violation, but really, it's sort of designed to get at those, um, public nuisance-y type things. Uh, so, right now, as you, as you know from Kevin's presentation, there's a list of administrative citations, uh, fees in the fee schedule. And so, for example, if you, uh, don't shovel your driveway when you're supposed to, your sidewalks, it's a fifty-dollar fine for the first time. And it depends on what the infraction is, the, the dollar amount is based on, you know, the severity of the infraction, essentially. Um, the fines are assessed after compliance notices are sent out. So first, the property owner has the opportunity to mow their lawn or put away the garbage that they had, or whatever the situation is. If they fail to do so, then we can issue this administrative citation. What the ordinance in front of you is asking for, it's a short ordinance, um, it's asking to increase the fines for repeat offenders. This is very common, in fact, I don't have a single city that doesn't have an administrative citation ordinance that doesn't also have this escalator in it, um, because what you will find, and what we have found, is that there are some chronic offenders. And so fifty bucks, fine, they'll pay the fifty bucks and they're just going to kind of keep doing it. But when that amount doubles each time, you can get their attention faster and more effectively. Uh, so what the ordinance is asking for, or what the ordinance changes, is it says, if you are a repeat offender of the same city code or, you know, violation, so it can't be a different one, but the same one, within a twelve-month period, that citation amount doubles. It maxes out at two thousand dollars, so the most that you'd ever pay for a citation would be two thousand dollars. Um, this is the actual language of the citation, it's what I just told you. Um, this is, and then I, I'm sorry, I, it sounds like it's not on your daisies, so you can't really see it, and you definitely can't see it up here, but this is the city code section, or the fee schedule section that lists the violi, uh, the administrative citation violation amount. It's also in your packet, I don't have the page number off the top of my head. But as you can see, it does vary. So if it's a, if it's an abandoned vehicle, that's going to be two hundred dollars, because keep in mind, we have to potentially might, might be towing that event, and some, there could be some costs for the city in that. Um, if it's the, um, building maintenance, just root, just a kind of a minor thing, that can, that's a fifty-dollar citation. If it's, um, wow, these are really hard to read. Public nuisance, including noise, it's a hundred dollars. Sidewalk, I think I mentioned that row, or, or a right-of-way snow and ice removal, that's a fifty-dollar citation. So, you can see where some of these are, start very, fairly low, um, and might need to be eligible for escalation if somebody doesn't comply. I, I'm available for questions, otherwise, I am looking for a motion to approve ordinance number seven forty-seven.
Thank you, Amanda. Counsel, open it up, questions you may have? A motion, if no one's got questions?
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve ordinance number seven forty-seven, to amend city, four six city code section thirty-six point oh two E, allowing administrative citation fees to increase with multiple citations.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and motion carries.
Thank you, and there's no resolution because this is a very short ordinance, so, or no summary publication.
Okay, we have a series of donations, uh, we will consider next. Um, just start at the top here. Item seven F, um, a motion, and, and, I'll just, I'll, I'll just make the motion. Uh, motion, Counsel, will, um, approve with gratitude, re- resolution twelve nine twenty-four zero nine, a donation from, um, Brenda Kating. And this is, um, specifically for, make sure I have this right.
Zero six, Myra.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just so we get it right. Twelve zero nine two four zero six, I thought you said zero nine.
Yeah, twelve, twelve zero nine twenty-four zero six. Um, a motion, our, motion accepting, uh, resolution, or motion accepting donation from Bren- Brenda Kating specifically for the Veterans Memorial Project, and, uh, motion made, um, very awkwardly, but with lots of gratitude, is there a second?
Want a clarification? I think there's two donations on that motion, are you going to call them out separately?
There was, uh, Mary Lindberg Trust also had a donation in the same resolution, it just didn't end up on the title of the agenda.
Yes.
Look at page one fifteen.
Can I, can I just start over? I would like to make a motion with gratitude to approve resolution twelve nine twenty-four zero six, accepting donation for the Veterans Memorial Project from both Brenda Kating and the Mary Lindberg Trust. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. I'll attempt a second. Uh, I, motion, Counsel, approve resolution twelve nine twenty-four zero seven, accepting donation from Tired Iron Collision Center, uh, in the amount of one thousand dollars with gratitude for, um, the twenty twenty-four shop with a cop, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. All right, we are, I would next like to, um, motion for Counsel approval with gratitude, twelve nine twenty-four zero eight, a resolution, um, of gratitude for the twenty twenty-four Hometown Holiday Event Volunteers, as listed in the resolution, I'm not going to name all of them, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. And last but not least, resolution twelve nine twenty-four zero nine with gratitude, um, a donation of Hometown Holiday, and this is for the specific holiday sponsors, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. Let's move into staff updates, and let's start with Jolene.
Thank you, Mary. Um, as you may know, our next regularly scheduled council, um, meeting or workshop is on the sixteenth, that happens to be the actual last meeting that's officially adopted on our calendar, that council considered at the beginning of the year. So, um, at this time, we have nothing on that agenda, so it's looking like this may be our last gathering in this year, and we would be coming back together January thirteenth as we seat our new council and say thank you and share our gratitude for Mayor Bain and Councilmember Husnick on the thirteenth of January.
Sounds like a plan. Abby?
Um, the only thing I have to say is, on your agenda, you had a resolution of gratitude acknowledging a ton of volunteers that came out to Hometown Holiday, but I also want to just note for the record, the work that Chief Newman and his crew did, um, helping maintain and put out the fire pits, get those safely put away for the night. Staff from the fire, or Police Department, both Julie and two officers were there that night, and then Dave, and all of Public Works, and Kevin Warner, for really helping make the park look great. We really could not have done this event without, um, their support, so I just wanted to at least acknowledge that effort.
Well said, great event. Thank you, Abby. Dave?
Uh, just, just want to touch base back, uh, from open forum about the comment about FLOW and negotiations, just want to put a little in context, um, just last year's agreement, uh, the city had with FLOW was thirty thousand dollars. As you recall, we, we credited him back fifteen thousand dollars because, uh, football left. Um, that thirty thousand dollars basically covers fertilization and the scheduling software. So, the mowing, irrigation, the aeration, the, the thatching, everything else out there is done with city staff, that doesn't get charged back to FLOW, so, um, not saying that we're not helping out, but I, I think the city is really, is still putting a lot of time and effort and cost into, uh, family complex and cooling camp, so I, I just wanted to comment back that it, that the city is doing, doing a lot out there, and I think we are doing a, a very good part in, in staff time and costs out there, so. That was just my one update, and just wanted to comment back on that.
Thank you, Dave. Chief Peterson?
Uh, yeah, we're looking forward to December sixteenth, the twenty twenty-four shop with a cop. And then also, I just want to thank, um, all the city council members for their service during twenty twenty-four.
No updates. No updates.
Excellent. Um, Amanda?
No updates, Your Honor.
Go right down the line here, Ryan?
Uh, Mayor City Council, it's been asked that I just, uh, bring out recognize it, to recognize the year in review, obviously, that's not a comprehensive list by any means, and I'm sure every department head would attest to that greatly, is their list could be pages long of things that they've dealt with through the year, but it's good to just see some of the stuff on paper, uh, some of the bigger projects that have been completed that have been in the works for a very long time, County State Aid Highway thirty-three or Everton Avenue, a lot of great safety improvements there, and I have already seen a lot of residents using the trails, so that's always great to see that activity after a project's been completed at that magnitude and the effort and time that took into going into that. Uh, and then just kind of looking at a lot of the commercial and housing side improvements that occurred here, some came up quickly, but a lot of other great new options for residents, uh, here in Forest Lake. So I think it's just a good list to kind of look back and reflect on, on some of the things that we accomplished and some of the things that we had to really work through to get to that point. Um, so with that being said, I also just want to thank Kevin, been a pleasure working with you, couldn't miss that, uh, coordination and organization that we had and some of the things that we were moving forward on, just how things were documented and, uh, were, it was very nice to have that, and then Council Mayor Bain and, uh, Councilmember Husnick, obviously, we go back, way back, so, long track record, accomplished a lot, wish you the best of luck in your free time.
What free time, what free time?
I always say that, right, we always find something else to do.
Kevin?
Uh, Mayor Bain, State Council, I just wanted to take, uh, take this time to, uh, say I enjoy my time at the city here, it's, this will be my last, uh, city council meeting, and I wish nothing but-
Last scheduled.
What's that?
Last scheduled.
Last scheduled, yes, I should say, should say that. Um, but I enjoy my time at the city and wish nothing for the, best for the city as you move forward.
Thank you, Kevin, you, we, you are leading your position in much better position, much better place than, I think, when you came in, um, we had, were coming out of just having a contractor in a role for a very long time, and there's somebody in that seat for an interim period, and, um, we're just sitting in much better sh- shape, so thank you for all of your work, much appreciated, good luck. Start with council updates and Councilmember X.
Yeah, just a couple of things, I really do appreciate the work you've done, Kevin, you know, coming into, on the council two years ago, with a ten-year plan in place was huge, and I know you're instrumental part in that, so appreciate that. Uh, let's make a quick comment about Friday, uh, activities at the park, it was incredibly, looked fantastic. Um, I had a friend stop by my office today who had been in attendance with a couple of his grandkids, and he had nothing but awesome things to say. And in fact, he doesn't live in Forest Lake, but he says this is our adopted town because we, we just do it right. So, that was great feedback, I enjoyed. Thank you.
Well done. Councilmember Husnick?
Uh, thank you, I, I, first of all, I want to thank Kevin for all his years of work here, the past few years especially, and, and, um, I know that we're going to lose our building inspector too, uh, approved, but he's not here tonight, but good people have always done hard work here in the city of Forest Lake, and, and, uh, and a thanks to, uh, all the folks that are here that worked in the office. Also, I want to congratulate the winners of the last election, uh, Mr. Robertson, our new mayor, and Jeff Larson sitting out, he's our new council member, and, and Hannah, uh, being re-elected, and, uh, to, uh, thank, um, our Bain for eight years of service to this city. I think I hit everybody, I hope so anyways, so, so that's it, thank you.
Um, Councilmember Funtel?
Uh, want to give an update that the Cable Commission, we are having our last meeting for the year, this Friday starts at four, and then we do kind of like a holiday party with food, and everyone is welcome at five. And I just want to appreciate the staff for the work, for the budget, since we passed that tonight. Um, so, that is just always an accomplishment. And, um, give appreciation and thanks for Hometown Holidays, as everyone has mentioned, it was a great event, and it's always fun to just see where that has, where that started, from when I started council to where it's going, and I think it's growing. And the amount of people that go there, it's just, it's becoming such a wonderful event. And then the appreciation of Kevin, um, just like Leif said, the amount of work that you put in for the ten-year budget plan is, was instrumental, and I don't think we'd be where we are, and I know our staff puts their hard work into the ten-year budget plan, and I'm just a huge fan of the ten-year budget plan. I couldn't speak more about it, and i- it just helps us moving forward with council goals, but also community goals, and, um, we couldn't have gotten there without you, so. And good luck on your next adventure.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yeah, just to echo the Ho- Hometown Holiday, it's very Norman Rockwell-esque. It was just a beautiful evening, and especially at the, thanking all the sponsors, uh, one of which is on the council here, that had a, a considerable amount of, of, uh, effort in that, so appreciate that. And Kevin, thank you, you know, for your hard work, it's, I don't know how numbers guys, like you guys work, but thank God we, we have, have you guys. Um, and so, um, then, you know, appreciation to Mayor Bain and Councilman Husnick. I look forward to a little bit of recognition on the thirteenth, but, uh, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Um, just real quick, um, a couple of things, Hometown Holiday event, just, we knocked it out of the park. If we could do that every single year, it would just be wonderful. Um, your description of a Norman Rockwell event was perfect, um, well done. Um, I, just quick note that no one's mentioned already, we do have the recycling center opening up, grand opening next Monday. Um, I hope you all will come and take a tour, there'll be tours available, um, opportunity to speak. Um, I believe, um, uh, Commissioner Miran will be there. Um, we'll keep comments to a ve- bare minimum, and we'll keep the focus on what's important, which is we're opening up a great recycling facility, um, so great to have that on the calendar. Um, a quick moment of acknowledgement, um, Councilmember Husnick, thank you for just your, just, you were on planning commission when we, um, merged with the township, or annexed the township, or whatever we call that thing that happened years ago, um, you were very involved in that.
Over various phases.
Yes, it was not a short project. Um, and then also, your work on the Airport Commission and ultimately on council for the last eight years, it's just been a pleasure, and thank you, well done. Um, thank you to staff for all of the work that you do. Um, we know that you are all wearing multiple hats and your grit, without your grit, none of this gets done, and so we're just really immense gratitude. I'm going to get emotional, and I wasn't going to. Um, I just want to say to this council that, uh- I just want to say to this council that I encourage you to make the hard decisions early so that you can look forward. Eight years ago, I ran to be able to move Forest Lake forward and we spent a lot of time looking backwards and trying to catch up. Soon after I was elected, it may have been the night I was elected, Susan Young said to me, I don't think you know the amount of work you had ahead, have ahead of you. And I spent the first year, asked, sitting down in Patrick's office saying, what's the plan for? What's the plan for? What, what are we doing about? What's the plan for? And he finally just, I'd walk into his office and he'd say, god damn it, there is no plan. And so, I just, we have a plan. Thankfully, there's a plan. But when you look at what is on that plan, these are, it's the backlog list turned on its head and at least we've got things on a plan. There are so many things we want to do in this town that we just haven't even gotten to yet. And I know these budget numbers are hard. It's hard to fund it, but do it early so you can get to the good stuff. We've got, I wanted to do so much with our downtown and I still walk through our downtown and I'm like, gosh, what an unappreciated, underutilized, just gem. We've got this entire southwest corridor that's opening up. And I'm sorry, I'm emotional. But these were things that we need to do and we want to do, but you can't do it if you don't have a plan for streets. You can't do it if you don't have public safety fully funded and staff in place and all of the things. And so, I am very grateful to this community supporting us getting to where we are. But we've got a lot of work and so, do it early, like catch up, make the hard decisions. Nobody spoke in our truth and taxation hearing tonight. We probably could have gone a lot further and it takes one year to catch up. We took a giant increase to streets last year. We got one year of, gosh, does it have to be that far? And then it's built into the base and you get, you just get to move on. And I know those words don't win elections and we all have to be elected and I have the freedom of not needing to be elected anymore. But do the hard work, get it done so that you can then start looking forward and doing the really fun stuff that we all want to do. And, but it has to go in the right order. I'm a big believer and you have to go in the right order and we have, and I'm just immensely grateful we have. So, thank you for getting us here. My apologies for being a bit of a mess. That is the end of our planned agenda. I will manage to wish you all a very, very, very happy holiday and nothing but the best in all of 2025. You are all in really great hands and you're going to do great work. Please, somebody motion to adjourn.
Sound moved.
Is there a second? All right. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose and we are adjourned.